Jeff, would you lead us in one prayer?
Yes. Your heavenly father will come to you this evening, Lord, and we just ask you to be with us and guide and protect us through this meeting. And we ask you to help us to make the right decisions, Lord, and thank you for all you do for us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pleasure to lead. Pleasure to lead.
Through the flag, there are no states that won't bear. Through the rubber, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
Okay, this is a regular scheduled meeting for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We need approval of the agenda, any kind of additions or any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
I approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carried. Approval of minutes, everyone get a chance to look them over? Any questions or additions, revisions? If not, we need a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of financial reports, any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I approve.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carried. Appearances, none. Old business, UTV restoration ordinance draft pages sixteen through eighteen.
So that was that draft that I gave you guys to look at, and if you didn't have any more concern or anything, you'll send it over to the attorney to go ahead and get the file.
Now, does that include golf carts?
Um, it's just side by side, Sheriff, do you know if that includes golf carts?
Oh, my God.
I think it's just side by sides.
It's just side by side, that's just my understanding.
Sheriff, you know if that's, is anything like anything other than side by sides that you heard?
No, 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 it's inside by side.
Okay, so if anyone got any questions or whatever, we can get Doug and let some adjustments on it.
That's right, we'll send it to the attorney and have him draft something up.
Fueling center report pages nineteen through twenty.
So if you, if you look at that one, you can tell that with the school system where they came on, we've actually started to increase their production. Um, we've gone from about twenty-something thousand dollars a month, now we're up to fifty-two thousand, and we bought sixteen thousand gallons of fuel. So that's, that's actually two complete semis, and we're working on getting a third one. Um, I'm not saying right now, but down the road, we're gonna probably add another pump, you know, and where the, the, what is it, off-road diesel? We've got a spare little slot there, we may have to put another on-road diesel pump there, because I was there the other day, and it really wasn't, I mean, it, it worked good, but you had two buses and then the, then us, and then the city. So it's kind of getting a little clustered, so if we can add that extra pump, it'll free up that one lane, so we'll look at that, we'll kind of keep monitoring. Nobody's complained yet or anything, but it seems to be working good.
Well, you can get some prices up on it, and we know what we're looking at when it comes to it.
It's, it's work, it's working a lot better than we anticipate.
I think all it takes is adding, the off-road is just one pump on that side, we can add a double.
Probably run that tight.
It'll just be a double pump like the other side, I don't think it'll be that big of a headache. We already got a pool line.
That's right.
That was installed, that's not being used, so we can tie into it.
Any more discussion on that? Uh, we'll move on down to new business. New policy and procedure manual draft pages twenty-one through sixty-six, it's detailed.
Yes, so, so this is an updated policy and procedure manual, we went and we reviewed several different counties, um, we pulled from each different one. We really, there's really not much change from what we had, it's just updated, like the comp time's been updated. Um, I think some of the, we had to add our holidays in there, and then some of the leave, but I just gave you a copy, so y'all can kind of read through it. Uh, the county attorney does have a copy, so just, we won't do anything until y'all get back to us, if there's something that you want changed or added, we'll do that before we finalize it.
Now, who will that affect?
Uh, just, just the county offices, constitution officers are not included.
Okay, that's what I will, I'll make sure. Any more comments or questions? If not, we move on down to five, three, one, one authorization resolution, regional commission pages sixty-seven through thirty-one.
This is what you sign every year, it's just a resolution for the, the transport bus that comes around, uh, we have to get it signed by each county, so this is our, our part to decide.
The hauler, that's what I call them.
Yes.
Any comments, questions? We need a motion for me to be able to sign it, correct Doug?
Yes.
We have a motion for me to be able to sign it?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carried. Approval of employee raises. We've lost two employees over the last two weeks, uh, they're just not able to stay there because of the place schedule. And Doug has got us a copy of surrounding counties.
Well, what it is, is counties of, of nine thousand and under, um, and it's basically whatever county's competed in or participated in the survey, um, some of them's local, some of them's not, um, and it just goes on to, you know, you can look at any department there, but, but I pulled the heavy equipment operator, laborer, and then, um, road crew supervisor. And those are your different, what, what the county start at, what they max out at, basically compared to what we pay.
I've had a discussion with Andy, and he said that he would get people to come in, you know, for applications and discuss it with them, and then they find out what we start off at. Some of them say, I'm not working for that, some of them just say, they walk out and you don't ever hear that from them. And I say, Andy, down, what, now seven employees account including you, correct?
Yeah.
And we got one possibility of another road grader operator that's missing second law, so if that happens, we're gonna be down to one road grader operator, one tractor motor driver. So, Andy, what, uh, what does your suggestion is this problem?
I, you know, I don't, I don't really know what to say about it, I know the guys, you know, they get where they can't make a living, and Nicky and I was talking about it after the meeting the other day, and when you go by and look, you know, a lot of them, their vehicle's old, and when they get to where their vehicle's gonna give out on them, and they can't pay the bills, they don't have much choice but to go somewhere where they can make more money, you know, and that, that's just only all I know. You know, I know the county situation too, and we just like to deal with it, you know, I mean, we dealt with it for a long time, we have a spell where we get some, we lose some, so right now, we just have lost some, and we just go out to hunt around, take on a couple more, you know? I, I don't know the answer to it, you know, I, I see both sides.
You have applications right now?
We got a few, I mean, we don't have any that, right now, that's a really a tractor operator or a motor grader operator, they're just applicants, you know, really.
Can we drive a heaster or things like that, but.
And I think we also, uh, yeah, um, labor finders called me and said that they talked with Shelley today.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we're, we're hunting and we're advertising and, you know, we're looking and word of mouth, you know, I mean, we're doing what we can, but we just kind of between a rock and a hard spot, and I don't know the answer to it, I mean, we, we've dealt with this pretty much ever since I've been here, and right now, just a bad time, you know? Everything's high, and, you know, people's having a hard time making a living, you know, so.
As far as the new employees that's put the applications in so far, as far as our start salary, they don't, I mean, they just putting applications in, don't want to come work or?
I, well, usually when you, when you sit down and talk to them, that's one of the questions they ask, you know, what you gonna start me out at, and, you know, you tell them, and some of them, you know, they'll kind of make a snide comment, and then some of them will just take the application and leave, don't never come back, you, you know, and you kind of figure that they hunting something better, you know, I mean? And the guys is there, they work hard, and they enjoy what they do, and they enjoy working for us, but, you know.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with Andy or anything like that.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just economic.
Some of them really hate, I mean, some of them break down in tears when they leave, you know, they hate to do it, but they just don't win as far as they can go, and they got to go somewhere else. And Nicky and I was talking about it the other day too, that, you know, there's people out there that's just beating their door down, I mean, there, there, there's, there's like twenty-seven thousand open construction jobs in the state of Georgia right now, and a lot of construction around here, and they want help, and everybody, everybody knows everybody, 'cause we all kind of work together, and they, hey, you know, I need some help, come work for me. I mean, there's offers out there just kind of endless, and some of them don't want to have to drive, and they stay with us 'cause it's right here local, but then, when they get to a point, they have to make that decision and do it, you know?
But I can't hold it against anybody for looking for better, I mean, support the family, you know, themselves, I can't, I can't hold it against them, I tell them, they talk to me about it, and I said, look, you do what's best for you.
Yeah.
You know, if you got my blessings, do what you need to do, you know, which would make no difference, but, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna support them if they decide they want to leave for a better moment.
Did we lose that, that gentleman that we had recently got?
No, 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 I, I mean, we're, he, he's there, and he's doing a great job, I mean, he's been a big benefit to us, I mean, he.
Is he on the motor grader or the mower?
He, he's been running the excavator, actually, we've been working on, you know, out there in Griffin Sherfield, trying to work along on that project, and we did that on Phillipsburg, you know, got all the trees broke down and, you know, going out of town, and I mean, we, we steady doing jobs, but y'all, I don't know the answer to it, you know, I mean, it's just something we gonna, all of us has got to understand that, you know, when we, when we broke down, we behind, when we don't have labor, we, we behind, and there's not enough of us to start with, but we are doing everything we can do every day, you know?
What about that, that, what we had with the sheriff department, the prisoners going in there, we don't, we don't do that anymore?
I can't get this Chris, the inmate work program?
The inmate work program, we don't have that anymore?
We don't have, we down to less than twenty over there in jail, and not, and we got two that can get out and work, that, that's not a risk, you know, that, that would qualify to be a trustee, and they, they stay busy, they have to feed the meal, three meals a day, and clean up around there, so we don't have anybody to cut grass, do anything. I wish we did, I wish all twenty over there could get out and work, but until they're sentenced, and, and, you know, when they're pre-trial, they can't, you, you can't put them out to work, 'cause they're innocent until proven guilty, you know, and then, then, uh, once they're convicted, uh, and now the state's pretty well, soon as they're sentenced, you know, they're going out on state president or to the PDC, yes, ma'am.
What do we pay them to start off with, but, you know, people walking off the street, wondering.
On this budget here, uh, the start is thirteen.
So they get paid twelve, but we went and raised the start to fourteen.
Yes, it's twelve now, but with the new one, it'll be thirteen.
And is this a, this a, the motor grader?
No.
No, motor grader, fifteen.
Oh, I was gonna say.
We got them at fourteen right now.
And then they go to fifteen on this.
Oh, they're going to fifteen.
Well, I don't, I mean, right now, we, we started twelve, we was at ten, and we went to twelve last year, I think, and then we went, I guess, y'all would go to thirteen.
Thirteen start, except motor graders are fifteen.
So that's labor.
Yeah.
That's what now?
Laborers are thirteen, will be at thirteen if you guys approve it, and then motor graders will be at fifteen.
Okay, I see what everybody's running at here.
I see one in Twigs at seventeen, and one sixteen in Atkins.
Look like the average probably would be one like eighteen.
One little bit I've talked around to some of the guys I deal with that is in construction, you know, we, we deal with.
Average will be around.
They start at sixteen and go, you know, somewhere along sixteen.
Fourteen.
Then they got some that pay higher.
You got like four or five there with twenty-something molly.
No, that's a year.
Well, y'all, that, that's what, y'all, and we've been through hard times before, and people come and go, and we, we mess around, pick up some more, and we'll go on.
You got some twenty-dollar odd one.
One. You got one, two, three, four, five.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
That's a year.
That's what they're starting by.
I'm talking about the, the maximum salary right here, what they, they, they.
Well, we talking about start, we talking about start, what we talking about at higher.
We went ahead and raised the starting salary up to thirteen, that's what would be correct.
If you guys approve.
Now, we got the, we got a lot of other departments that put in for raises too, and, and it's just that since the budget hadn't been approved, I haven't put the raises in yet for the county employees. Hopefully, we're close with the budget, but.
Well, my concern is the people walking on, you know, they're not gonna sit here and wait on us, or we should have done, had it done since, you know, we supposed to have done July first, you know, the budget stuff, correct?
Well, I mean, there's, there's no way it can be done, 'cause we don't have a lot of numbers.
But we've never done that in the last ten years.
These guys are not gonna wait on us till.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we'll have to do it for all the departments, go ahead and give their raises, if, if y'all decide.
Well, then we're gonna do one, we're gonna do all of them.
Thirteen, thirteen start.
Well, I, I wasn't asking for anything, I mean, I just want y'all to know that, you know, it's, it's becoming a problem, you know, but it's, it's nothing that I hadn't dealt with before, and like I say, we, we regroup, and we'll, we'll go again, you know, I mean, it comes and goes, so.
You think with thirteen, though, you can entice some people?
I, we might get some, you know, I mean, it's just.
What's your, what, so like, how long do they work there before you give them a raise? I mean, they work six months?
I don't, I don't give them a raise, y'all do.
No, 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 you do give them raises.
You ask for the raises.
Yeah, you're the one that gives them a raise, but we don't work them.
Well, I, I. I come to y'all at budget time, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so I mean, six months, seven, six months?
It begins when they start, you know, I mean.
Six months?
No, it, it'd be, well, if, if they started in January, it would be July, you know, 'cause I just come to y'all at budget time.
Yeah.
I don't try to come in the middle of the year.
So you don't do?
'Cause we budget, you know what I'm saying, so I feel like that raises should be given.
You can budget that in your budget though, when you do it though, if you got an employee.
But not for a certain period of time, don't want to get bumped in pay?
No, no, not by our policy, it don't, so I come to y'all at budget time, and say, hey, you know, we need to raise up this salary, and we do it at budget time.
We haven't never done it, that's what we're, we're implement here.
That's, that's what we need to do.
If Andy's busted this tail, I'll give him two dollars an hour, but if somebody else is not, I don't think they deserve the two dollars that Andy's giving.
Exactly, that's why we need to.
We've never done it, and I think that's where we need to go.
I did that, you know, and, and I've had times when there was people that, if, if they were going all out, they, they got a raise, and there was guys that didn't, and I even went as far as, we do it, we'd always do an evaluation on everybody, and I did two on me.
Oh, you didn't do your evaluations?
Well, they quit doing, I mean, I was doing it on my own, and bringing it to the board, and the board said, hey, we don't, we don't want it, you know, but at that time, they quit giving any kind of raises whatsoever, it was, if your insurance, the insurance went up, they considered that your raise, there wasn't any raises, and, and, am I correct? But I was doing evaluations on all my people, I sat down and did theirs, and I set my group down as a group, and I let them do an evaluation on me and my performance, and I brought one to the county commissioners, and let the county commissioners do an evaluation on me, as what they thought my performance was, because I think you should do that, but then the board just didn't want it, you know? And we'll go back to it.
So they don't pay you, they pay nothing?
Not unless they're tobacco users, or they want a better plan than we offer, we pay a hundred percent.
Yeah, our insurance, that's changed now, you know, but there's been so many years.
Right.
That there wasn't a raise given, and they know that, that it was just, well, your insurance went up, there won't be any raises, and that's where it was at.
We used to take it out of salary, but we're not now, correct?
Do what now?
It used to come out of salary, the difference, but now it does not.
Unless they are tobacco user, and then that's just a little bit, or they want to up.
A search all.
Yeah, see, I up mine, and I pay some, but I don't have to.
Two years ago, they got a raise essentially, 'cause we started.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, just, I'll let.
I think it's a great idea to do the performance evaluation myself, that way.
I did, I did them.
You know where all your employees stand, you know, whose performance and stuff.
I did them, and if, if a man's gonna stay stuck in a rut, and he's just gonna have, he's gonna go out every day and just do this and this, he's never gonna take any incentive, I, I feel strong about that, that, hey, you know, you're not gonna do any better, you're not gonna take anything on yourself, this is what you're gonna make, where you got a man over here, he goes all out.
How many, how many employees in your budget do you have budgeted for?
Eleven.
And you only got seven?
Seven.
So you got some money to play with already.
Yeah, but then if you, when you start taking them on, then you don't.
If you, if you didn't, if you hadn't paid them for two or three weeks.
And then I gotta come back and say, hey.
But if you haven't paid them for two or three weeks, you still got a little.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I like to do budget, I know what I got to have, and then, yes, at the end of the year, I have come to them and said, hey, you know, give them a little incentive, 'cause we had a little money left in salaries, 'cause we run some, you know, maybe give them some incentive, and give them a little extra, but it never happens.
And he's already putting.
In that way.
We can start with the performance, but he, everybody's already, including Andy's already put in what they want, it's just, we haven't started it yet.
We had empty minutes, yeah, we had empty.
I just think with the performance evaluation, maybe like every six months or so, I'm just throwing that number out there, and then I wait, or yeah, whatever, I mean.
I would do it quarterly.
I at least did mine once a year, and I did it, and then I come to y'all at budget time, 'cause that's when you're budgeting your money, and I'd say, you know, hey, I want to give this one this, this one this, this one this, and we asked for the money to go in budget off of that, but then they, they, they stopped, you know, so.
A lot of times it's like ninety days and then yearly.
When's the last time you had eleven people on staff?
Yeah, we went from, we went from about sixteen, we went down to eleven.
So when's the last time you had eleven on staff?
Just kind of recently, but the guy, I mean, we got up there, but then he, he didn't make ninety days, 'cause he come in there and said, I worked him too hard, and we worked it too fast a pace, and he wasn't working for the month week day.
So how many you got now today?
Seven. He quit, you know?
So, so when's the last time you had eleven?
Well, that was a few months ago, you know, that I did have eleven.
I made a month, I made a month, I made a month ago.
About three maybe, but now I just got back to eleven, we've been hanging around nine and ten, I mean, that's where we've been.
I remember the, you've been at nine.
Yeah, nine mostly, and then we, you know, we might get to, but we took on.
What were we looking at?
Two right quick, but then one of them, he just walked out left, you know, so.
Starting at a lot of.
No, I'm talking about, with this budget coming up, were they raising this figured into this budget?
Yes, what they giving me, yes.
What we looking at, just say the road department, what we looking at there?
What the raises were?
Yeah, the guy down there, what.
Out, the motor graders went up to fifteen.
Went up to fifteen, not everybody, you, everybody that was under, the motor graders that were under fifteen, we bumped them up, and then the start and pay, those that was still at twelve, we bumped them up. People that were already at fifteen that weren't motor graders, we didn't, you didn't put, you know, you just said, gave us a few, you know, the names to bump up.
Yeah, but it, it's gonna be across the board, everybody's gonna get it.
I don't, I mean.
No, I'm just asking, the employees.
I leave that up, we turn.
No, it's not your employees, all of them's gonna get it, if we vote on it or not.
Or you take the limb cutter.
No, I didn't, I put that, I left that up to y'all, if y'all, you know, I, we asked for start and pay to be bumped up, you know, or maybe we could get some people in, and the people that were under, if, if you bump start and pay up, you was gonna have some that you had to raise up, and I left the rest of it up to y'all, if y'all have money that y'all want to give raises across the board, you have to give everybody else a raise.
I have a question, so, so the people that you didn't give raises, those the people that's been there a long time?
Yeah, most, most of my guys has been with us.
Is that something that personnel by all reason are not getting it, or?
No, no, like I said, I kind of leave that up to y'all, that if y'all, I mean, bump, bumping up start and pay would affect some people that you can't bring people in off the street, and you've got a man been with you a year or two, and he's making this, so you naturally got to move him up to match start and pay.
I know, but if all your guys at your department are getting a dollar an hour raise, and somebody's been there twenty years, it's not fair for him not to get one.
No, I, I agree with that, but, but I left that up, y'all, to see if y'all was gonna give everybody a raise or not give a raise.
That's what I'm getting.
We're going.
Well, this is what you submitted, I think. Yeah.
Well, you, you keep saying us now, but this is you, this ain't us.
Right.
This is you.
And my thing is, if you, if you.
I give them all, you know, a raise, you know what I'm saying, a certain amount, but, you know, I'd give a percentage, you know, a, a cost of living raise.
So you saying give all your employees a percentage raise across the board?
I, I would, you know, but mainly, we was worried about the start pay.
Did you do that, did you do that in your budget?
No, I, 'cause I leave that up to y'all, you know.
No, no, it's not up, that's, it's up to you.
I mean, I can ask for it, but I didn't ask, I didn't ask for everybody a raise, I just asked to get start pay up, where you can bring some people in.
And then move the motor grader, so.
Where you take the guy that runs the limb cutter, I'm not calling names, you could ask for better employees.
And therefore, I say, if you can't ask for a better employee, then you need to make sure that he's taken care of, you don't want him to leave.
No.
You don't, you don't want him to say, listen, I have got a raise in this many years, and just because of what they're making, doesn't mean they don't get a, a raise.
Oh, I understand.
You know, so we need to take care of the ones that we got on board.
But I kind of always leave that up to the board to. Decide, well, if you gonna give a cost. Decide whether you gonna give a cost, you know, across the board raise now. When we bump up start pay and these guys get raised up, that you won't give them another
No, I just think.
A cost of living raise, you know, they'll be in there, but then the guys that have been there, you know, it's kinda always, to me, it's left up to y'all whether you give a cost of living raise.
What what's happened is he's turning something, y'all only see what I put in because that's what I get from him. So when y'all approve it, you're just proving what he turned in and he's thinking that y'all were seeing that and then saying, well, maybe we give across, well, y'all just proving what I turn, what I turn in, which is what he turns in.
And well, but this is the.
Or 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 we can re, we can look.
The way they always had me kinda doing it in the past was like I did ask for start pay to go up and whoever that affected, that didn't make it. But then it's always been left up to the board to where the board decided, I'm gonna give a three percent raise, you know, across the board and then everybody got, everybody that draw a paycheck, got that. I never get to make, I never got to make that decision and say, hey, you know, I want all my guys to get a raise.
Since I've been here, yeah, every department's turned in their own.
It just makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I've never done, since I've been here, and this is my fifth budget, we've never done everybody across the board five percent. Each department has turned in their.
That's, that's kinda the way they always had me do it was, you know, and most time we didn't get to ask for start pay to be raised is just a problem.
Yeah, but how are we gonna approve it if he didn't do it all in flow is, I mean, I don't wanna improve.
That's what I'm saying, give, give all them, all the, because I think, I I don't wanna talk about salaries on. Some of them's making over sixteen, so I mean, I I wouldn't say move them up a whole dollar, you know, we we do a percentage.
No, they would come in and say, well, we gonna.
Well, you would give them something to take care of them and let them know that you appreciate them, give them something.
Now, you don't wanna leave left out in the cold.
Well, that's what that performance evaluation, I could see if they had something in their file, then no, don't get into it.
So would you just, if they'll do it, you just come tomorrow.
I mean, they always didn't leave that up to me to give the employees, you know, a raise. I could ask for maybe one special thing or something. But it was always, you know, up to y'all. If y'all sat down and when y'all did budget, if y'all decided, hey, we gonna give a raise across the board, you know, y'all gave the raise.
I hadn't done that in five years on that.
Well, we prepared to try to do something to stop people from walking tonight, not the road department.
What's that?
Are we prepared to do something now to try to stop these people from leaving the road department?
Well, yeah, that's what he's saying. He's gonna go back and reevaluate what he's, what he's gonna do.
Yeah, because the budget is almost, there's a few more numbers that Cody's gotta get to faith.
We're later this year because of the.
Because of that new, but but other than that, the budget is pretty much done. We're we're in good shape. Um, if y'all go ahead and approve the raises, then he can come in tomorrow and we'll sit down and we'll see what somebody's making and what what what's good enough to give them. That's not gonna break the budget too much, but everybody needs something.
Yeah, you don't wanna just hand fix.
So when you say approve the raises, we're talking approve all.
Yeah, because like Lance said, we're so close to the budget, everybody just. And then then he can come back, he can come back and we'll readjust his.
We could a little bit.
So what you're saying, we are, we are approving everybody else's budget, not any?
You pretty much got to. If you do one, you gotta do all of them.
That would be my recommendation, we go ahead and do it. You know, and then get this thing done because I can't go down and operate no roads there. Drive no traffic with them or what stuff, you know what I mean?
I can't either, but I just, I wanna know what was given and and I don't wanna say I approved something and I don't know what it's gonna do. I mean, we're walking blind. I don't, I don't know.
I I agree with Doug. I think we ought to sit down and really look at it and y'all say I I'd prefer that y'all say, hey, we gonna give a certain percentage and then we'll see what it is.
My thing is, we need to start.
Or look at some numbers, you know, and say, you know, this is a certain percentage, this gives them this much and it's a decent.
We need to stop across the board, dollar, two dollar, three dollars. We need to go to percentages to what they do. I mean, that's, we were behind for years and then I, when I was with EMS, we were way behind on salaries. And now we've kinda caught up and we're towards the middle to the top, so I I think we can go back to percentages now.
Yeah, I, when I first started, I did the evaluations twice a year, like you were talking about, Jeff. I did it every six months and as Laiden said, I would come back and, you know, and talk to the board. And when I did those evaluations, we actually got two small raises during the year. I mean, it was a percentage, you know, and if you had a guy that you wanted to give a little more, you'd work that out kind of out of your percentage, because if you had a man that wasn't performing well and you got a man that's just exceeding, you might split that little bit up, give this guy a little more than you gave that one. But we did it twice a year and we got at, I think it was July and December, we got two little raises throughout the year. And it seemed to work better when we did it that way. The people had a little better morale because they, you know, they were steady getting a little something. They felt like they were getting something.
They felt, they felt they were appreciated.
Well, if you, if you do it on, when you hire them, six months later, you evaluate, you get that personal raise. And the people that's been there, you get, you put them on that yearly, you know, they're, they have something to look forward to every single, you know, every year that they're gonna look forward to a raise. You know what I'm saying?
Right. I always like to start at this and then at ninety days, you give them a little bump. If they did well, you gave them a little bump. But it's never been budgeted to do it. It was like you just start them at this and then you waited on the county commissioners to give a raise and that's when you got them.
But almost problem with that is that's helping and I'm and I'm for helping the people coming in, but the people we trying to retain.
Yeah, you gotta help them too. Right, right.
That's what Rude's coming in at right there.
Well, that's when you do that year, year.
That's what I'm saying, six months and total, yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with that, but I mean, that's y'all's decision, you know, but I always, I always felt like the morale was better when we did the evaluations twice a year and the board, you know, had it set to, you know, we had enough money to give. If it wasn't but five percent of your salary, whatever, you got a little bit twice a year and it, people felt like, well, shoot, I'm getting a little raise and you know, if I keep getting these little raises, eventually I'll get up to making pretty good money and they stayed with us. But when we quit that, and then like, like we was talking about, we kinda went to, when the insurance went up, that was your raise and nobody, I mean, sometimes the insurance went up and your paycheck got less. You know, so I mean, they wasn't getting a raise, they actually lost a little money.
But that ain't happening no more.
Right.
I understand, but I mean, that's just kinda how it's worked in the past and you kinda got people stuck at a salary.
That's been two years ago, though.
Can we have a budget workshop this week? So that we can get these raises nailed down. Next week I can figure out what we need to do with retro pay or whatever. But we need to sit down, maybe if we could, with y'all have a budget workshop.
Well, Doug, can you and Andy get together tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll sit down tomorrow.
But I'm talking about all the departments, what they've put in, so y'all can.
Then after that, then we just need to have one.
You know, like I said, I wasn't asking for anything and I'm not gonna ask for anything to break the bank because I mean, you know, I know we can't afford it, but we need some kinda incentive to help keep it. We we talked about this today in our meeting. This, the city went to something to help out and I, you know, I don't know if y'all would even be interested in it or not, but at Christmas, you got X amount of dollars for one year. If you've been here two, you get X amount of dollars if you've been here three. Now, they put a cap on it at the end of so much, but that is something that some of those guys, they look forward to because I've been here one, two, three years and I get this money to help buy Christmas. And, you know, that, that's an incentive to stay with you longer because you get a little more every year you stay.
Well, that's basically looking what gas is now. Big guys ain't getting no more money. Everything just keeps going up, you know what I mean? You know, go to grocery store, break your heart. Or on your parking book.
I don't know the answers. I mean, you know, I, I don't know. I know it's hard to do this without.
Friday afternoon's not good for me.
We can do it.
I do Friday morning.
What time Friday morning?
Whatever time, whichever time y'all wanna do it.
I mean, if you're gonna do it Friday morning, the earlier the better.
But I can't do it Thursday night.
Yeah, you can do it after Thursday.
That's fine.
Eight thirty?
Okay, so we put, we got a little bit of a, a plan to go with. Why don't we move on then? Golf course equipment, these are seven three through seventy four. Don't give us some more information.
Okay, so basically what this was, at the rec department meeting, Winston came and presented that that sprayer, the picture of that sprayer I gave y'all, um, that, that thing is on its last legs, about to tear up. So he initially presented to, to me a two thousand and seventeen for thirty four thousand five sixty, but then at the meeting, he said that something was wrong with that, so they went ahead and up it to two thousand and eighteen. Um, the board approved it and said, move it up to this board and let y'all discuss it. So that's where we are. Um, he does need that piece of equipment. He did tell me that, uh, the golf guard, golf course is starting to chase a bunch of of profits. They're, they're not old as bad as they were, so.
But they are, they are making a penny.
Well, he says they, you remember last time at the meeting, he told us they were starting to make some money, but I don't know as far as how much. He didn't really say. He did ask about it for the new budget. I told him we had budgeted the same amount that we, we had been budgeting. But that's a piece of equipment that they, they darn deep. They say, um, we talked to them in the rec board when the Nicky, we said that we wouldn't, we couldn't use all this splosh money because that's dual recreation and them. Um, maybe to finance it and just make payments out of splosh.
And that'll be two pieces of equipment for the golf course. We'll be making payments.
That should probably.
Thing we bought last year.
Whatever, what did they buy? Bought a tractor. Wanted a tractor.
It's a tractor, something.
The real moment. How much of money are you gonna be obligated?
I mean, you, how much, can you check, how much?
Thirty four thousand five seven thousand dollars a year.
I know, just see what the, the total is. But he, he has said this is very critical. I don't know, Laiden, you may know what it does. It's supposed to spray the greens.
Well, he spray, he'll spray everything he's got out there with it.
Is it like a sprayer or was it?
Yeah, it folds out and it's got things on it. He'll spray everything. He sprayed the stairway greens, everything.
It's lightweight. Where it don't mess up. It's what it is.
It says something, one of them says a phone marker. I don't know what that.
That's when you turn around, you can follow it where you don't miss streets.
They can follow up.
We used to do that, but it's all in the little yellow bubble now.
While we're waiting on that, I'm gonna let y'all know, um, that limb cutter that's kind of been donated to us will probably be here either this week or before the end of the month.
Then we gotta hire someone, we'll have to.
Andy's gonna have to show me how to run it.
Let's see somebody who run it right back there.
We gonna cut it down to park. We don't try to park down here. We don't try it out down the side of the park. So that means we gotta get some others to do that.
I, I told the rec board that's, I took in about four hundred tons of overlay and, um, that road between the ball fields, that the overlay would be really nice on that road right there. We get opportunity to do it. If y'all give with that, park board didn't have a problem with it, but we got in about four hundred tons of it. I think we're gonna probably get a little more of it. That'd be really nice down that road.
It stopped that washout too, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's sorta like between washout and G A B, what I got and I, I got it for free. And I had to pull a man, you know, we had to stack it when they was hauling it, but I mean, that's all we got in it is, you know, keeping it stacked. Then we'll have some to work on the road. It won't take that much to do that road, but that'll really help that little road, you know, between the ball fields up there.
And it looks good since Mr. Libor got them trees. I don't know if y'all, but I would look at it. It looks like a whole different.
And I got enough wood chips to go in the playgrounds if I keep them from burning up. We having to stir them about every morning, keeping some air to them to keep them from catching on fire.
There might be a biscuit in that stuff you gonna put out.
Yeah, there's a biscuit in it. If it had a good sausage, he could have cooked it good. We gonna try to see if they're not, I, I told Nikki and them at the board that, you know, they're not quite as clean as what you buy Home Depot, but they, they, they look real good, you know, and I think they'll be asset to the playgrounds if we can get them in there.
So she went and looked, it's sixty thousand without this payment that we've got in.
And that's, and there's a new one that had bound.
Yeah, so there's gonna be more. Six twenty six is what, what their payment is now.
How much?
Six hundred and twenty six dollars is all that's coming out now with, out of rec for them. Uh, we don't have, the recreation does not have any payment soon. We have anything that we buy the car straight out.
They have the yearly payment on that truck.
Okay, so just the truck payment.
And then how much this was gonna be? How much, how much dealt?
That, well, what we'll do is if, if y'all go ahead and move forward with it, then we're gonna have to go ahead and reach out to the banks to see who's gonna finance it. So like we normally do, I'll, I'll send out to First State Peoples and the, the Bank of Donalds. Whatever the cheapest rate is.
If you look at the splosh reports that are in there, you can see rec and you can kinda see what they get in each one.
The roughly, roughly what we take in a month.
It's on that, you got that spreadsheet right there in your packet.
Like, you remember what that, uh, uh, lower was? It wasn't thirty thousand.
I wanna say it's twenty five.
So it's, it'd be a little over this payment then. A little bit more than this payment, because the other one was like twenty something thousand, this is six hundred.
What number?
Thirty nine through forty.
Yeah, but what number is that?
You don't have the number?
That's T splosh. I'm sorry, thirty seven through.
Did you get two T's?
Right here, ain't it? Right here.
That's T splosh. There's a splosh.
I think I don't have thirty seven, thirty eight.
Let me go look. I'm just gonna look and tell y'all what they're giving.
Y'all of course fun. Is that what we're looking for?
No, because it's all under the, the splosh is under recreation. It's all.
Y'all are so tricky. It says y'all of course fun.
I think that's, uh, that's what y'all fun.
Y'all need to do some bigger writing on this stuff.
My glasses is getting bigger lately.
I had to keep easing back.
Y'all are made long enough no more.
I know it. Tell when you find it.
Well, I can't find it. It's not in here.
That thing is thirty five. That'll be seventy five hundred dollars a year or something like that.
Probably thirteen hundred together, both of them.
Maybe around, around three thousand a month, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less.
About three thousand a month.
Three. It's a little over some months.
So we gonna be obligating a little less than half of that then, every month to the golf course.
Through the new that's coming in.
I just don't wanna get upside down for this stuff. So you'll be looking at about twelve, thirteen hundred dollars.
Probably about thirteen.
Go up to half of them, what we taking?
About seventeen hundred more, less.
Sometimes they get thirty two, thirty.
Yeah, it all depends on how many people buy.
Because it's sales tax.
I think they, if you do, they just need to be made aware not to come back.
Yeah, that's my concern there, but I don't wanna come in here and. Yeah, that's my concern there, but I don't wanna come in here empty.
Should be it, you know.
What it's more important to be down.
But you're doing two different, you're trying to do different, two different entities on one splot and you can't, if, if one of them's getting it all, so I kind of restrict that. I mean, if he needs it, you know, he gonna probably have to do it, but.
Has he got to have it the rest of this year or is he pretty good with the ones he got?
Didn't he say it was, other one was tearing up?
He said he needed it yesterday.
Yeah, and, and they just did all that work on the greens.
Which cost is a good bit.
The cost is a good bit and.
And everybody I talked to says it is, is in immaculate shape out there.
It is beautiful out there.
Well, he has need to make, be made aware of that, he bought Reese's Women down there.
I'll be, I'll let Cory know.
Make the motion to buy it.
But y'all, if y'all do it, you want me to reach out to the lanes, go ahead and get the, the raise and then certainly y'all.
Yeah, get the best interest rate by all means. Everybody agree with that, get the best interest rate.
You'll go ahead and make a motion.
All right, Jeff made a motion, we have a second? All in our favor?
I'll, I'll let y'all know in the group chat.
Motion carried. Root Department August report, page seventy-five through seventy-nine.
So I'll start very quick, like I said, what Andy was talking about, we're, we're actually starting a department head. We started having department head meetings, we'll have them, um, it's just for the county departments. We'll have them every Monday of the commissioners meeting. And we'll bring like different reports. So EMS is gonna provide a report, nine one's gonna provide a report, Andy and them is providing the report. So that'll kind of keep y'all up to date on what's going on. Y'all'll know that way, if somebody asks y'all, it doesn't, it doesn't stump y'all, y'all'll know it's what the citizen asks you. So you'll start getting reports in your package from all the different departments.
If y'all want them. See, I did that report as I did the other stuff, but I said it was a waste of paper to not do it, so I didn't do it, but if y'all wanted, and I told Shelly, there was some interest in what, you know, was going on. And I told her, I said, let's go back, fill it out, send it in, we'll see if y'all wanted it. So if y'all wanted, I'll make sure mine's in there.
I think they, that they.
And there's, you know, there's things in it that we miss, you know, I mean, there's things I do do that, but that's a brief summary kind of, you know, there's things in there that probably get falls into crap, but that's a lot of, lot of the work that we do right there.
Okay, we'll move on into buildings and grounds, contracts.
I think it's a good idea to.
Yeah, so if you notice, the pipe thing y'all wanted last week is in there, you know, I got two jobs, Newberry Chambers and Glass Road, and then I got some extra in there, so if y'all do approve some of that, or if you wanna look at it, I mean, I'm working out there on him, Miss Christine's, you know, trying to get the pipe that I got for that job put in. I mean, we jumping from one job to another, but we're working on that job, got part of it done and, um, working on, on another section of it. So I don't have to have the pipe tomorrow or nothing, but those are two jobs that are on my hit list and then have some extra pipe to put in. Like we was talking about on Draper Jones and McClendon needs one, you know, I mean, some single pipes. But if y'all wanna do it, we'll order it. If you don't, if you wanna look at it, we'll do it later, you know.
I have a question, is there any way, I see where they said repair the holes. Is there any way that, that somebody could go out on, on Cook Town Road?
We, we're gonna work Cook Town tomorrow, I'm gonna run two rigs. Um, you know, it takes, we're gonna just have to stop and we're gonna work Cook Town tomorrow. We're gonna run a lime rock rig and put a little lime rock in the bottom of where we don't have to fill up the big holes. And we gonna run a asphalt rig filling in the pot holes, cause it is bad. And I got a truck that's gonna make a run to Florida and get another load.
And then, you know, this is our detour road, so, you know, it, it, I mean, I hate to drive my, I'd rather drive my car down a dirt road than to drive it down. I'm, I'm serious.
Cobble road we were building.
It's terrible.
Well, keep in mind, our drill green did come, called back and say that whenever this project was finished on nine one, every level, they would help pay for the damage to the road.
Yeah. But it's gonna be damaged cars before we can get there.
We got to work Cook Town and it's probably gonna be, uh, every week or every other week that it, it about takes a day for us to do it and it takes, you know, we have to stop some things to do it, so everybody's gonna have to be patient with us, you know, about this getting a little behind and that getting a little behind. Because there is things that we have to stop and go and do, and that's one of them, but that road right there's just got to have some attention. And tomorrow we gonna use what we got. The next morning, we may go back out and just do it two half a days at a time, cause I, last drill we used, what we had putting out on it, I got a, a good bit that it's gonna take and that'll be gone, so I got a truck leaving in the morning going to Florida.
And did you get the pipe for Draper Jones that we talking about or no?
What was that?
The Draper Jones project, did you get that pipe?
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I hadn't got the pipe, I mean, that'll be in this pipe right here.
Tomorrow glue.
So, yeah, if y'all want to order some extra, we'll order some extra and that'll give us some pipe to do.
Well, I know we had talked and approved to buy the pipe to fix that project.
Well, y'all said get up some prices, we talked about it and y'all act like y'all would approve it, but you said get up some prices, so I did. And that's.
Yeah, well, man, we need the pipe to fix the project. We gonna need the pipe to fix the project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, but, you know, I want y'all to know that that's what it costs and if y'all wanna do it, I will.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that's what we left it last time.
No, we kind of left it like, get up some prices, you know, let's price these jobs and some extra pipe, so I did.
And I recommend, let's go ahead and let him get his pipe, cause he know what he need to work with.
Oh, yeah, I would definitely go ahead and get it.
And I got in there, I mean, I know y'all didn't really approve the avenue dump site, but I put in there kind of the cost. And I got, I mean, we've already got some stuff ordered, so we have to wait. The fence is kind of hard to get and we've had it ordered, but it, they don't really buy from that company and it takes a little while for them to actually work it down here to us. But that, that is ordered and we'll go get the other stuff, we've done, done the cleaning, I imagine Jeff's done seen that. We did a little cleaning on it and, you know, as soon as we kind of get all our ducks in the road, that's one of our next projects is to get that. I might have somebody on the hook that might wanna do the job, so I'll talk to y'all about that a little later after I talk to them a little bit.
Mr. Bush, you had a fit, what you got?
Yeah, you only have one question. And you said you got nine employees?
Right now I got seven.
Seven. That includes Shelly.
Yeah.
Um, um, if I were onto the camp, I think she just couldn't jump to a drop anybody. But I was thinking that Shelly was a, guy stopped by there and he said, uh, where's the secretary? I said, there she go going out the gate. Uh, so he really got no employee now, because Shelly can't be named as an employee, cause she really in the truck drive. If she could drive, just good as any other guy.
Well, we all do a little everything, the only thing we've looked at is, um, our phone system is not working correctly. We looking in getting that fixed to where if we're gone, that phone will transfer to one of our phones. And we're looking into getting that back up and running like it's supposed to. I don't know, when we changed over to these new phones, it worked a little while, then it quit working and we got to get that kind of team back up.
You working with the company on that?
Yeah, I emailed the guy, uh, you talking about transferring it to yourself later out?
Yeah, it would transfer, when we leave, you know, it either go to my phone or Shelly's phone or we got another phone there. You know, I mean, somebody, we wouldn't be missing any calls or things like that. And when we're gonna be gone, we can leave a note on door, hey, we're out working, please, if you need us, call this number and we'll be able to handle anything anybody needs. But right now, that is not working for us and we need to get that back in order, cause right now it's taking all of us. And, and, and we're all working hardest we can work.
Get back to the pipe, we need to go ahead and decide whether we're gonna get a pipe.
Make a motion to get.
All right, we have a second?
No, second.
All in favor? Motion carried, Andy only five.
But you are right, Mr. Leroy, he does need some help.
We got him.
Yeah, I agree.
The secretary out riding a dump truck.
That's why we gotta be careful, cause if the class fires the secretary, she gets hurt on a dump truck, maybe a bit.
But she good.
Why not?
Oh, yeah.
No, she's good, you know.
Yeah, I tell you.
Yeah, she's a good all-around employee, she kind, she knows, comes up here and helps him. She helps everybody, I mean, she's, she's all-around employee. And, and, and as Leroy said, she, she has been well-trained as a dump truck driver and if you need her, she's right there and I've done a lot of jobs that she hauled the dirt to me and me out there on the ground and I did the job on the ground by myself. And if had to be it for her, there have been a lot of jobs with the guy done.
She is definitely multitasked, believe that.
And, um.
Andy, you got anything else in?
No, we.
All right, we'll move on.
We just doing it, we doing everything we can do every day and everybody's just gonna have to be a little patient with us.
We'll move on to the building and ground contract, mowing and landscaping, page eighty.
Yes, so, so I was doing some looking and some research and talking. Um, the county never had a full-time buildings and ground maintenance director since it was created, I, I believe, I can't find anything in history. We tried it a couple of years ago and of course you look, it failed. I, I would recommend going back to just doing like we do with the builds and grounds is, is the purse. We pay a plumber to fix the plumbing, we pay an electrician to fix the electrical problems and go that route instead of hiring an employee. But what I do think we need is, we need somebody that can be a landscaper slash mowing department for the seventeen departments that we got. Cause I, I, me and Austin's been doing it, but I, now I'm moved up to the parks, so the, the county, I know they're starting to look bad. So we need to go ahead and, and I talked to Mr. Leroy about it, but I, we, we, we need to get quotes, like three bids on who and get somebody to actually take over our mowing of the county departments.
Do we have any bids?
Uh, we got two right now, um, low to high. But I, I just, I still wasn't gonna close it until we, we get enough more bids. I wanna reach out, there's two more people that's wanting to talk, I mean, Mr. Leroy talked about putting in one, so we just need to get a, get a stack of bids and then just go from there. But I just don't think what, what some of them are is actually cheaper than hiring an employee. Cause you, you're not gonna have to worry about the maintenance on the mowers, you're not gonna have the weed eaters, you're not gonna have the gas.
Benefits.
Benefits, so it's cheaper to do it that way if we get the right company. Um, that, that's what I'm.
Go and track it out.
Yeah, and just, cause I mean, it's seventeen properties that we've gotta do. And that's the health department, the D facts and all that, you know, we're renting those builds out, some of them starting to look bad.
I think contracting that would be a, a good route, because.
Yeah, that's what I, I would like to do, instead of just trying to hire somebody bad.
What is the pink?
The pink building is the old rent doctor's office, we call it the pink building, right off the square. You make one of, you make one of, you make one of cut around and put it back on trucks.
He probably edge it, he probably get the weed eater out too, yeah.
You get weed killer out, you take care of that problem.
That's it, so that's, that's what I wanted to do and let y'all know what the, the prices would be.
Is there anything else, can I leave something for the board?
I do one thing, I gave it to y'all, um, in the rec board meeting, we also, cause you know, we, we've got an interview with a couple of peoples for the rec board, but we have, uh, some software quotes that we put in that most of your counties are using. It's a company called Civic Plug and they do civic rec, which is the recreation software. Uh, that's one thing that we tried to get the last director to do and he would not do anything. This software will help with concessions, it will help with scheduling, it'll help with talking to the coaches, the, uh, the employees and the parents. You sign up online, you pay online, the whole nine yards. Um, there are different prices and different plans. Fay had talked to Mr. Perry Henry about it and he said that we could pay the initial cost upfront, but we cannot pay the annual fees. So he would suggest going with the higher, um, the, the two-year, which it, I think it was thirteen thousand, uh, which is not a bad price, cause the software we use here is what, sixteen thousand?
Fourteen.
Yeah, so it's, it's running neck and neck, but then what that would be is, that's for two years. The third year, we would only pay four thousand a year. And that would give the rec department time to get the concessions built up, get the tournament fees built up and, and, and start bringing a revenue to pay for it itself. So that's, that's what we were recommending through the rec board, was to pay that thirteen out of, out of splot. Rec splot. And then we wouldn't have a payment for three, two years, third year we would have a payment. Um, and whoever we hired would come in with a clean slate, they would have their software they need. We would not get back to where we were.